Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 10, 2025, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadurian?
Here.
Brockman? Garpetian?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Mayor Najarian?
Here. Will everyone please rise and join me in the flag salute? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. We are honored to have Reverend Steve Weeby of the... I've got it here, I've got it here, we have so many guests. Of the Glendale Presbyterian Church, serving as senior pastor.
Thank you. Please join with me in prayer. Almighty God, we come to you today at a time of great uncertainty, but also a time where we can affirm our connection to each other in community. We ask for peace and safety in our own community. Bless our civic leaders that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice to promote the general welfare of all, rich or poor, young or old. Grant them creativity, flexibility, and a spirit of innovation to respond to the myriad of challenges before them. We thank you for the blessings we all share, this beautiful city, our abundant resources, the strength of our common life together. May we build upon our strengths and recognize the good we have and the good in others. Open our minds and hearts to see needs and opportunities around us. Provide for our needs, we pray, and may we all contribute together to build a more perfect union here in the city of Glendale. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the June 10, 2025, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on June 5, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and what's next on the agenda?
Next would be presentations and appointments. There will be no city council meeting on June 17, 2025. The next regular council meeting and housing meeting will be on June 24, 2025. We also have item number B that has been moved to June 24. Item C is proclamation in honor of Juneteenth.
Thank you. Yes, as you know, June 19 is known as Juneteenth, and the city proclaims June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth Independence Day, commemorating the end of slavery in the United States and honoring the ongoing journey towards justice. Juneteenth serves as a powerful reminder of resilience, reflection, and the shared responsibility to uphold freedom and dignity for all. Therefore, I, Aran Najarian, do hereby proclaim June 19 as the Juneteenth Independence Day and call upon all residents to reflect, learn, and engage in building a future rooted in justice, unity, and the shared dignity of every person. Next item, please.
Next item is proclamation declaring June as Men's Mental Health Awareness Month.
And this is the reason for this proclamation. Mental health is an important part of overall well-being, yet many men struggle in silence due to stigma and societal pressures. This June, during Men's Mental Health Month, the city of Glendale encourages open conversations, greater awareness, and access to support so that no one feels alone. Together, we can create a community where seeking help is a sign of strength. Signed, Aran Najarian Mayor. And I'm going to have to comment that it is very troubling that our society does not place enough emphasis on issues, health issues, and mental health issues affecting men. In fact, we were unable to obtain a representative from a men's mental health organization to come and receive this proclamation. And I think we all better pause and make sure that when we offer services and commendations, that it not be just to one gender, that it be evenly spaced. Men have a lot of pressures, men have a lot of issues. I don't need to tell you about that, mental health issues and physical issues. So I hope we can concentrate on that, and I'm glad that this proclamation is one step forward in that regard. What's next?
Next is consent items, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
And is there a motion? Mr. Garpetian?
I'd like to pull for C. I'm going to not vote for that item because it was decided three years ago, two years ago, and I was not part of it.
Would you like to record an abstention on that, or would you like a report on that?
Not a report, I'm just going to vote no again.
Well, we can record a no vote on that.
Without pulling it.
Without pulling it. Is there a motion for the calendar reflecting that desire?
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar noting Councilmember Garpetian's no vote on item C.
I'll second.
Let's take roll call, please. Well, we don't... Well, we... Yeah. They'll be voting yes with that modification.
Councilmember Asadurian?
Yes.
Brockman? Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
And Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Seeing council staff comments.
Hey, who would like to start? Councilmember Asadurian?
Trying to keep it short.
Oh. Councilmember Kasakian?
Um, well, just want to wish all the fathers out there a happy Father's Day this coming weekend, and also congratulate all of our city's graduates. It's the season of graduations, already starting to see it in, you know, the social media feeds and families celebrating the great accomplishments of their children. It's great to see all of that hard work finally pay off with a graduation ceremony. Just please don't do it with mylar balloons. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garpetian?
Yes, I attended a couple of events. One was the martial arts museum in Glendale. It's in the basement of one of our buildings on Brand Boulevard. It's very... I didn't know it was that big. It was, it's like eight to nine thousand square feet. It was a great event. Also participated in, attended the Cars for Cops and Kids program. This is the event that we come together, enjoy each other's company, and talk about cars and raise funds for our police department. I want to thank the Glendale Rotary Noon Club for putting that event together. It's getting bigger and better every year. Also, attended San Gabriel Valley Regional Mayor's meeting with Council General of Mexico, Mr. Carlos Gonzalez Gutierrez. It was a... Many of the mayors of different cities attended. Since Mayor Najarian couldn't attend, I attended on his behalf. The biggest topic was immigration and the rights of immigrants and everything else. But there is a program they have that I want to let our city manager and city staff know that I will provide the information, you can contact them. They have this program called Consulate on Wheels. So they will bring their council general, they have these big trailers or what have you. They bring it to your city, set it up for 21 days, and provide services. If you have any questions, you want to obtain visa, you want to obtain... Whatever questions you have, you can, you can, you can just obtain from that, from that temporary Consulate General of Mexico. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to say that on Friday, June 6, the Metro LAX Transit Center was officially opened. This is the transit center, which is served by both bus lines and rail lines, which is at the doorstep of LAX. The people mover from that particular transit center to the terminals themselves is not ready. It should be up and running in about six months, but it is a big step forward to bring transit to LAX. And of course, once our BRT is online in Glendale, you can connect by transit to the LAX and through the LAX Transit Center. So congratulations for that. It's a very, it's a great transit center, it's about a billion dollars, very spacious, lot of artwork, very accommodating. The next thing I have to say is, Councilmember Asadurian and I went on the food tour this past week. We started with high cuisine at Le Brand Restaurant, which is at the corner of Brand and Glen Oaks. The owners are very excited. It promises to provide great music and great food. And we also then took a more proletariat look at dining, and we went to Fat Sal's. Fat Sal's is open, everybody. It's a fun place to be, they're open till 3:00 a.m. They specialize in their fat sandwiches, in milkshakes, and it's a lot of fun. If you have a chance, stop by and grab a sandwich there. And that's all I have. Mr. Galanian? Any comments from staff at this point?
None, sir, thank you.
Furthermore, it is going to be our intention, upon proper action, to move item 8A, the mayor selection policy, to our next meeting because we don't have a full council. So those who are thinking about that, just to give you a heads up. Let's move to the next item, please.
Item number 6, community event announcement, three-minute portion. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communication subject to three minutes' time limit. I do have four cards and one caller.
Let's begin. Alan Durham?
Mayor Najarian, members of the council. I'm pleased to announce a community event, actually four of them. The, this summer, the Alex Film Society will be presenting four classic films in their... Do you have the slide? There it is, thank you. Four classic films in Brand Park in front of the doctor's house on a state-of-the-art outdoor screen. The first one, Saturday, June 28, is Disney's Lady and the Tramp, classic animated feature. I believe it's the first animated feature that was produced in widescreen Cinemascope. Saturday, July 26, Double Indemnity, a really classic Billy Wilder, Raymond Chandler noir mystery, set in L.A., mentions Glendale a couple of times. Saturday, August 23, That's Entertainment, clips from MGM's most famous musical films. Saturday, September 27, The Pink Panther Strikes Again, that's Peter Sellers as bumbling Inspector Clouseau. The gates open at 6:00 p.m. each evening of the program. The program and the movies start at 7:30. Bring folding chairs, blankets, picnics if you want. It's totally free, all are welcome. This program is, or has the generous support from the Glendale Historical Society, the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association, Brand Associates, GNC Properties, Glendale Arts and Culture Commission, and Glendale's Community Service and Parks. So we appreciate the city's support. Please make plans to attend one or more of these films. It'll be a great opportunity to get together with family and friends and community and, you know, hopefully have fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Anita Quiñones Gabrielian?
Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council, and appreciated staff in Glendale. I, my name is Anita Quiñones Gabrielian, and I am a member of Amigos Unidos for Immigrant Justice. And we think, I usually see you from the comfort of my own home. Sometimes it's my bedroom because you go on so late. But today I thought it was really important to show up and say thank you for a decision that the city has taken. And I'll, I'll just read so that you know exactly what it is. Thank you to the city of Glendale for ending its agreement with Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, to house detainees in the Glendale City Jail. While we wish it had come sooner, and I know that you've talked about it, but it finally came. And I think that that, the city has taken action and a good step. Ending this contract is the right step toward rebuilding trust and reaffirming our city's values and inclusions, of inclusions, safety and fairness. As we move forward, well, before I say that, I want to say that the big step here is making sure that our police, who we appreciate so much, and I told our chief, I sleep so much better at night because he's here, and I heard you, some of you, say that also. And that's what we want them. We want them here to protect and to serve. We want their purpose to be crystal clear, and we think that in ending this, you've made that very clear. And I think that is going to be very different than the atmosphere, than the environment we're in, which is so uncertain. What we need is clear, decisive leadership that is thoughtful and provides their staff with clear direction. So as we move forward, Glendale is our home, our community, and our responsibility. We believe deeply in protecting what makes Glendale strong, a commitment to fairness, compassion, and civic integrity. We reject fear-based politics and reactionary posturing. Whoops. We believe that Glendale can lead with calm, not chaos. Again, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next is Tony Passarello.
Evening, council, Tony Passarello. Glendale residents and business owners, please hear me. Mr. Brockman wants to force e-bikes and dangerous e-scooters on us by selling us a green-wash snow job to get you out of your cars in the name of climate change. Consider the following. Shared e-scooters and e-bikes often last only one to two years due to vandalism, theft, heavy use, and poor weather resistance. The frequent replacement of these vehicles often offsets much of their initial carbon savings. Vans and trucks are used daily to collect recharge and redistribute scooters and bikes across the street. These gas-powered collection vehicles contribute significant emissions. Lithium-ion battery production is energy-intensive and involves harmful mining practices for lithium, cobalt, and nickel, contributing to ecosystem destruction and pollution. Many old and broken scooters and e-bikes are discarded or improperly recycled, leading to landfill waste and toxic material leaching. Studies show that many e-scooters and bike trips replace walking, biking, and public transit rather than car trips, leading to net higher emissions per trip. Abandoned and poorly parked scooters and bikes clutter sidewalks, requiring city crews and contractors to intervene, which again involves trucks. These fleets require constant maintenance, tires, brakes, electronics, and repair operations typically involve carbon-heavy transport and new part production. Many e-scooters and e-bikes are manufactured overseas, mainly in China, involving long supply change with substantial shipping emissions before they ever reach Glendale. And I'll move on. E-scooters in particular increase sidewalk and road conflicts, sometimes causing accidents that demand emergency response, vehicles, ambulance, fire trucks, contributing to additional emissions, Mr. Brockman, if you're listening somewhere. Literally no safe, protected bike lanes to ensure public safety in the city of Glendale. The only safe, protected bike lane was rejected in a mandate by the people at 76%, Mr. Brockman. In your own survey, by the way, Glendale's own survey. Last one. No public, no public support. The minuscule 2% think about climate change is an issue. Believe lack of transportation. Anyway, show up in the agenda item in the future, Glendale residents.
Next, please.
Next speaker is Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Glendale residents, my name is Mike Mohill. Council members? We had a woman here by the name of Anita who praised you for canceling ICE in the Glendale jails. Where was she and her group when President Biden allowed between 15 and 20 million illegals into this country unvented? Where was she protesting? I didn't hear talk in her group. When President Obama was here, President, they didn't complain about the facility Glendale Jail? Where were they? Johnny come lately. This is all politics because this group has a problem called Trump, Trump Derangement, we call it, isn't it? If this was Biden, you wouldn't be, they wouldn't be talking tonight because it's... President Trump won the election because he said, "I'm going to round up all these illegals and send them back to their home country, where they came from." You know, I go to Kaiser right now, and Kaiser is overrun with illegals using their services. I used to have 90 minutes free parking when I went to Kaiser. Now I'm only getting 30 minutes because they have a cost problem. So, you know, I listened to Mayor Najarian talk about the jail facility, and in Glendale, it's like Cadillac facility compared to them going to Los Angeles, the county, for the illegals to be rounded up. It was a good here, but no, no. What I'd like to know from our city council, how are council members voted on this item? I think the public deserves to know how each one of you voted. Because this is the public safety item. You know, I hope Anita doesn't get attacked by one of those illegals or raped or her family members. Cross your fingers, Anita, that you stay safe. Don't go out of your house. Because there are many people who've been raped, beaten up, killed by an illegal. And President Trump says, "I'm sending those illegals back to their home country." I pay taxes not for illegals. I don't mind paying taxes for American citizens. I don't want to pay taxes for the people who came here illegally. I believe in legal immigration, like most of us came here legally and waited their term. Thank you.
David, you are live. You have...
You have three minutes, David. Go ahead. David, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Um, similar to other people's public comments, as a Glendale resident, I am glad the city has canceled its contract with ICE. And at least the city isn't directly profiting from the kidnapping and deportation of its undocumented neighbors. But, um, I still want to ask, will the city in the future still uphold its obligations as a sanctuary city? And with what happened a day ago, lots of horror stories from Los Angeles, and it makes me nervous about the safety of Hispanic and Latino communities in all of the LA County. Because the City of Glendale doesn't have to kowtow to scare tactics. None of the executive orders or our president's childish demands are laws. They don't have legal power, and I want Glendale to use the legal power that it does have, not with unsupported wishes from our president. I saw someone earlier talk about raising money and trust with the city's police officers. And if we want our police officers to be effective with inside information about our communities, if we want our police officers to be trusted, they cannot work with ICE. Deportations and disappearances, often compared to kidnappings, undermine the Hispanics community, Hispanic communities' trust in government institutions. So please make the right decisions in the future. Immigrants did not make LA safe. It was police brutality and the deployment of the military against its own people and Trump Derangement syndrome. Look, I, Biden has done a lot of things that I disagree with, but of all the things I could say about him, he would never send the fucking National Guard against his own people, against his own, against the American public. Remember that over half of Glendale's population is made of immigrants, and please consider that in your, in the city's policies in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Is that it?
That is it.
All right. Well, let's move on to the next item.
Uh, next item is item number 13, oral communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of the agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, I do have three cards and two callers.
Before we go there, let's take care of the housekeeping on item 8A. Could you please read that into?
Sure. Item 8A is action item, City Attorney, review of Mayor's selection policy set forth in Glendale Municipal Code Section 2.04.020, and discussion of alternate provisions, one motion directing staff.
Thank you, Council members. I think we all believe it's a good idea that we have a full contingency of council members before we discuss this issue, just to be fair to, to Mr. Brotman and the public as well. So if there's no objection, I think it'd be a good idea if we continue this to the next meeting. Are we good with our?
July 1st.
Oh, July 1st, so.
Yeah.
The second.
The second meeting.
The second meeting from today. And if there's no objection, let's take a roll on that continuance.
Councilmember Asadrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. And now, should I make you read it into the agenda, into the record again?
No, I won't.
Does he have to do it again?
No.
No, unless you'd like to.
We're fine. Go with the cards.
Um, yes, please, uh, call the speakers.
Uh, Beth Brooks?
Is that five minutes or three minutes?
Five minutes.
Okay, this says three minutes. Thanks. Yeah, I'm going to be unpopular. Uh, I am totally against illegal immigration. I think it spits in the face of legal immigrants who have spent thousands and thousands of dollars and waited years to come in legally. I think we have this idea that everybody who's here illegally is lovely, and we're all supposed to hold hands and sing kumbaya. And that's actually not, not the case. Every single person who comes into this country illegally, who has killed or raped somebody, has taken a life that didn't have to be lost. How do you support something like that? I mean, it's one, you know, is the police here to make everybody feel less nervous? To make everybody feel like life is all fair? Or to make sure that you're not, you're not killed or raped or run over by a car? It's not funny. It's actually the truth. I mean, one, if my daughter, let's say, something happened to her, and I knew that somebody came in illegally, I would say, they didn't have to be here. Why did she have to die? People act like, like this is some sort of issue that's about race, and it's about politics. It's about practicality. It's about logical and trust your eyes and ears. This is, this is totally unfair, and, and Glendale has now telegraphed to the whole country that this is a sanctuary city, which is actually dangerous. Because if, if there's a, if somebody's supposed to be detained by ICE because they committed a crime, and people do come into this country having committed homicide and rape and sexual assault, and you can't, you don't even ask their immigration status, this is very dangerous. How do you think that all these people who were killed were killed? They were killed because they weren't, they weren't, they weren't, the federal government wasn't even told about them. They weren't detained. This is a huge problem. This is not about being a bad person and not being politically correct and being racist. It's just nothing to do with that. Real safety is, is my physical person safe? Is my business safe? That's real safety. It's not ideological. It's all practical. And this, you have telegraphed to, at least there were 6.5 million views on X, that Glendale is a sanctuary city. So you've basically told criminal illegal aliens, guess what? When you come here, if you've committed a crime, come on down. Come on down. It's okay. We're not going to touch you. We're not going to ask you your immigration status. I'm sorry if people feel nervous that they may be picked up. You know what? If you committed a crime, what, what can you do if you came in illegally? It's, it's, you're going to feel nervous. You're going to feel nervous if there's a warrant for your arrest if you're a legal immigrant, uh, uh, you know, uh, American. You're nervous. You know what? I'm sorry you're nervous, but your not being nervous is not more important than people's safety. That's paramount. And that should be what the police are, are concerned with. Because I could read you all the crimes that happened. And if you're a mother, or a father, or a sister of those people who were killed, why is that okay? Of children. Should I read the names? No, because they're going to say it's racist because they tend to have Hispanic names. I'm Jewish. Do you think I like the fact that I'm sure that there are illegal terrorists in this country who want to kill me? This is, this is not a political issue. This is a safety issue, period. That's all it is. You know, there are plenty of people who, you know, should have been picked up by ICE and they weren't. And how many names do you want? I'll give you the names. Okay. Jocelyn Nungari in Houston, 2024, two Venezuelan nationals illegally present raped and murdered her. He was released by Border Patrol and committed the crime while awaiting an immigration hearing. Rachel Moran, Maryland, 2023, Salvadoran illegal alien who entered as a getaway, was charged with the rape and murder of Rachel Moran, mother of five. 13-year-old girl, New York City, 2024, an Ecuadorian illegal alien caught and released in 2021, kidnapped and raped the 13-year-old girl, filming the assault. It doesn't mean there aren't millions of wonderful people who came in illegally. We are not just open for business for the whole world to come in. You have to think about following the law. And if you're, you're saying, we don't have to follow the law, because it is the law actually, the supremacy clause of the Constitution. So the caller didn't even know what she was talking about. Preemption, that if there's a conflict between federal and state law, the federal law tends to win. So again, this was a huge mistake, and you let it just be announced on X as opposed to at a City Council meeting with public comment. Thank you.
Next is Jeffrey Lobb.
Mayor Najarian, Council members, my name is Jeff Lobb, and I'm a resident of Glendale. This past week, as we've heard, you made the decision to terminate Glendale's agreement with U.S. Homeland Security and U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement to house federal immigration detainees at the Glendale Police Department facility. In explaining this decision, you stated that this was based on the values that Glendale stands for: public safety, local accountability, and trust. And while I'm sure there was debate and discussion and differing motivations, it was a decision that ultimately required courage and conviction. So I'm here today to ask you, as representatives of Glendale, to take another action that requires courage and conviction. In a press conference yesterday, Speaker of the House Mike Johnson was asked for his thoughts on President Trump's suggestion that Governor Gavin Newsom should be arrested. Speaker Johnson's response was this: Look, that's not my lane. I'm not going to give you legal analysis on whether Gavin Newsom should be arrested, but he ought to be tarred and feathered. These are the words of the Speaker of the House of Representatives, a national leader second in line for the presidency, casually calling for extrajudicial violent action to be taken against the governor of our state. Now, you could argue that this was just an expression. Yet last month, when former FBI Director James Comey used the expression "86," a term very commonly understood to mean "removed from the premises," this was described by the presidential administration as a serious threat of violence, leading to a Secret Service investigation. So why should Speaker Johnson's overt call to violent action be treated any less seriously? Perhaps you could say that Speaker Johnson was being colorful, or flippant, or even just careless with his language. But at a time when tensions are so high, when the National Guard and U.S. Marines are being deployed into our cities against our own residents, when you hold such a high, powerful office as Speaker Mike Johnson, you do not get to be colorful, flippant, or careless with your language. Such an inflammatory statement undermines public safety and our trust in public servants. So I am asking for local accountability. In response to this abhorrent statement, I'm calling on you, Mayor Najarian, and the Council, speaking for us as Californians, as Americans, to publicly condemn what Speaker Mike Johnson said and call for his apology and resignation. We deserve better from our public servants, and we have collectively failed ourselves by allowing for a political environment that permits such casual, violent language to go unchecked. I am asking you today to stand with me in condemning Speaker Johnson's statement. Thank you.
Rama, you have five minutes.
Hi, everybody. I like to, when I can, just speak, but I wasn't sure if I could do this in the time allowed, so I'm just, you'll forgive me for reading. So I'd like to start just by saying hello to everybody, Mr. Mayor, Council members, your remarkable staff, and my neighbors. My name is Rama Hughes. I'm a teacher. I'm a family man. I've lived in Glendale for 20 years. My kids attend our public schools, and I've taught in several of them. I thought I'd only have three minutes, so I'm going to just take a moment to say, I was so proud of you for signing the order. I know that you made a lot of my students really happy by making the decision you did about our collaboration with ICE. I wanted to let you know that I started attending these council meetings a few months ago because the internet no longer felt like a healthy way to understand what was happening in our country. I wanted to see for myself how our democracy was functioning, and I'm grateful to say that I've been very comforted here. During my first visit here, I felt my brain trying to identify which one of you was on my side, which one of you was on my side. But I really learned quickly how lazy that question was. Everyone here, everyone here, is more nuanced than that. I've disagreed with you on one issue and then agreed with you on the next one. And I've learned from listening that everyone here, everyone here, respects the rule of law, wants fair treatment, cares passionately about justice, values reason and common sense, wants safety for their loved ones, is brave, opposes genocide, considers it an insult to be called a Nazi or an extremist. I would go home after these meetings, I'd read more about what was said here and who said it. And I was alarmed to see firsthand how something innocent that happened in this room could be made to look evil online. I sympathize for all of you who have suffered that. By being here, I learned how extremist my own thinking had become. It was extreme of me to try to sort you or anyone else, complex people, into enemies and allies. Each of you?
Each of us?
Is a custodian of our own unique perspective, and all those perspectives provide insight on the issues that arrive in this room. Needless to say, I am frightened by the direction our country has taken. We've seen how innocent people suffer when wild accusations are made. We owe it to each other to be skeptical, especially skeptical of anyone who might benefit by turning good people against each other. My ask tonight is simple, and it's for all of us. I'm asking us to investigate opposing viewpoints, search out arguments that challenge your own. We probably won't change our minds, but we will understand the issues better, and we'll have more compassion for people with different opinions. There's a lot of nuance in the issues that are already brought up here today, and I think I side with Beth that illegal people who are breaking the law and hurting people should be brought to justice. But there are a lot of people who are here legally. There are legal immigrants, and you can't know just by looking at someone if they are or not, right? So everyone deserves due process. Healthy debate values wisdom over victory, and with that wisdom, I'm asking all of us to identify our values, prioritize them, and decide for ourselves what we're willing to do to protect them. That's what I think we're all trying to do here right now. I asked to speak tonight because I want to make you a promise. If you're here to make this city and this world safer, kinder, and a more just place for everyone who lives here, then I'm on your side. I have your back. I'm grateful to be your neighbor and to do this work with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Malcolm Johnson. Malcolm, you have five minutes.
Hello, good, good evening. I just wanted to correct something, a small thing that Ara said, uh, Mayor. My family is from Galveston, Houston, Texas. This is where Major Granger came on Juneteenth and announced the end of slavery. And unfortunately, slavery had been ended for six months at that point, and none of the slaves knew. Now, I don't know if my people were descended from this. I, I'm from Galveston, Texas. That's all, that's all I know. And the last slave in my family is a woman named Bridgette. Again, that's all I know about her. I don't know where she came from. I know where she was bought, but that's, when people talk about immigration, I was not, my family was not brought here, well, we didn't come here of our own volition. You were brought here as cargo. You were brought here to work, be worked to death, and then, well, that's it. So I understand that people are upset about what y'all did with the ICE, ICE contract, but just know that you listened to the people of the city, you understood what their needs were, and you fixed it. Okay? And I also understand that Obama deported about 3.3 million Latinos, Biden did about 4.4, and the main difference was the National Guard was not involved, and due process was given. That's all we wanted, and I think you did that. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Tamelin Chiteko, you have five minutes.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tamelin Chiteko, and I'm calling to express my support and gratitude for the City Council and City Manager's decision to terminate the contract with ICE between us and the City of Glendale. This community is made up of immigrants, and I love living here so much. And not only do they contribute to the beauty and diversity of Glendale and Los Angeles as a whole, but no one is illegal on stolen land, period. Thank you.
I have a caller by name Stakeholder. I don't have your full name, and you're, you're staying anonymous. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead. You have five minutes.
This council spends money just like a drunken sailor. The only difference is a sailor spends their own money. I do not understand why this council spent numerous meetings for only discussing $5,000, but at the same time approved an $83 million increase in electric bonds. I'm disappointed that the council increased the electric bonds to $280 million. We can read between the agenda lines and know this was done not for the terrorists, but mainly to mitigate the GWP increases for ratepayers. I think the economic... but mainly to mitigate the GWP increases for ratepayers, hunting the economic effects to future generations to the tune of $83 million after 30 years of interest. Shame on all of you.
Alan Dish, you have five minutes. Alan, go ahead.
Mr. Aram, thank you, city council. Good evening. Alan Dish, my name. I'm so sorry. The meeting is going on so fast I couldn't be there, but so let me get to the point. Thank you. I want to just comment on the gentleman who spoke about Galveston, Texas. I read a local historian, Catherine Yamada, who gives a wonderful analysis of how Mr. Brand, Leslie Brand, was inspired by the white avenues in Galveston, Texas, when he was planning our brand boat. So I like this connection. Second point, yes, thank you to the city manager for making that decision regarding the immigration contract and so on. You know, I am so sensitive here in the sense that, yes, the criminals and so on should be prosecuted, but I don't like this spectacle of going to Home Depot and so on and so on, you know? Are we aware to what extent our local economy relies on this legal, but also half-legal, primarily Latino workforce in landscaping for our garden, in agriculture, and so on and so on? You know, I don't blame just the right wing, but the left sometimes is too quick to turn it into a humanitarian cause, like we should be open and so on. Yes, we should be. I'm for more immigration, but in an organized way. I admire the right wing who says, "Okay, they don't want immigrants," but then they say, "We'll try to find a way maybe to accommodate," like with Reagan, who provided amnesty to millions. What makes me sad is, yes, LA is being used now as an example, a spoiler and so on for maybe things to come, this kind of stricter rules. But I don't think it's simply fascism, you know? Leftists are quick, when they see something they don't like, they say, "Oh, it's fascism." No, I'm not sure what it is, but I would call it maybe liberal fascism. That is to say, full capitalist modernization, dynamic, but grounded in some kind of ethnic, religious, traditional values, you know? Like, look at our media, which is full of, you can say whatever you want, racist, sexist on social media. Go to that page. What is it called? My God, it's called Drivers of Glendale, and all the comments are about how Armenians and so on and so on too much. So how is it that last week it was Musk versus Trump debate, but now Los Angeles is falling, or whatever it's being called? So, yes, if I may just say some concluding remarks about Glendale, how interesting it is that we are making certain decisions that give us more independence? Like, did you notice, yes, the manager making the decision recently then? Last week, if you watch the, what is it called, that committee that meets for the charter? Yes, they were concerned about meeting in July, because it would be close to July 4th, you know? I like this coincidence, though, that our city charter committee is precisely, would be revising its committee, or the city's charter, on Independence Day. And in the sense that it happened again, you remember, last November during both vice presidential and presidential debates, Glendale City Council, you had a meeting, and people were concerned, like, "Which should we tune into?" You know? It's as if Glendale is flexing its municipal authority in a good sense. How much time do I have? My God.
Forty seconds, Alan, forty seconds.
Forty seconds, okay, yeah, yeah. No, no, no. I admire so much what is going on. I was there even yesterday, okay, from a safe distance, the protest. It's not what you think. Okay, there are some people who are causing problems, but many were simply there in solidarity and so on and so on. So of course, there's a curfew today. I'm not saying I'm ready to whatever, go and risk. I mean, if it becomes violent, I would run away like a rabbit, maybe, but you know what I mean? Like, I've been doing so much research and so on and so on. I admired how immediately.
Thank you, Alan. Your five minutes is up. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Mr. Aram.
Thank you, Alan.
And thank you, Mayor. Bye.
Christina H., you have five minutes. Christina? Can you hear me, Christina?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Hi, thanks, everyone. I'm Christina Hoekstrom. This is actually my first city hall meeting. I really appreciate the opportunity to call in. I know that a lot of folks have already spoken ahead of me on this, but again, I also want to give my thanks to the city for ending its contract with ICE. This is the right decision and a reflection of who we want to be, as you said. ICE is not a legitimate law enforcement agency. It's a gang that abducts people without due process, and those people are our neighbors, people who are doing the hard jobs that keep our city running, people fleeing terror and genocide, just trying to survive. Jewish people like my husband can especially sympathize with people fleeing terror at all costs. Many of them came here legally, might I add, only to be made illegal when Trump canceled their legal pathways. That means the president, any president, can decide who is illegal at will. And let's be clear, simply existing in the U.S. without documentation is not a criminal offense. It is a civil offense. ICE regularly bypasses due process, detaining people without charges, without access to legal counsel, and without fair hearings. Due process is a cornerstone of our Constitution. It's not optional. It's not a luxury. It's what separates a democracy from authoritarian rule. When we let agencies sidestep it, we all become more vulnerable. And finally, studies, including from the Department of Justice, show that over and over, undocumented immigrants commit crimes at lower rates than U.S. citizens. The narrative of criminality is a lie, used to justify cruelty and spread fear. Remember, you can list all of the anecdotes you want about people who have been victimized by undocumented people, but anecdotes are not statistics. Do not give in to the horror stories. Do not give in to the fear mongering. It is the responsibility of our town to protect all its people, from ICE, from state violence, and from the erosion of our shared values. Thank you again for taking this important step, and let it be the beginning of deeper protection, unity, and care for every member of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, that was our last caller.
Okay, thank you. We have two meetings to adjourn, so the first, I'll take a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Second.
Special meeting is adjourned, and then for the big show?
Second.
We are adjourned.